I call to order the regular session of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, January ninth, two thousand twenty-four, at six thirty P. M. Roll call, please.
Mayor Vaticiotis?
Here.
Commissioner Eisner?
Here.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Here.
Commissioner Kolyanis?
Here.
Okay, if we can all stand for the invocation and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Almighty God, you have created all people and all creation. We give you thanks for this gift. We're invited to engage with hope, joy, and love as your disciples. Open our hearts and our eyes to see our communities as you would have us to see them. Help us to find courage to sit and hear others when so often we want to be heard first. You are good and you are gracious. Oh, God, let us see all people as children of you who created us. It is in the name of the Lord we pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Happy New Year, everyone. It's gonna be a great year. This is the very first meeting of two thousand twenty-four. I've got a couple of announcements to make before we proceed to the agenda. We received a resignation, letter of resignation of Commissioner Craig Lunt on December twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three, effective the close of business that day. We're gonna have to reappoint a commissioner, and the process for selecting a new commissioner will be discussed and approved by the commission at next week's commission meeting on January sixteenth. Ms. Kardashian will be back at that time as well. The presentation, outgoing presentation to Commissioner Lunt will also be at the first meeting in February second, I'm sorry, February sixth, at the first commission meeting. So if we're not gonna really say a whole lot about Commissioner Lunt tonight, we'll save it for that night. But right now, what I do need to have is a motion to accept Commissioner Lunt's resignation effective five P. M., December twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-three. We have a motion to that effect. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kolyanis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotis?
If you do wanna say anything about, yes, if you do wanna say anything about Vice Mayor Lunt, if you could make those during public comments. But again, we'll have a full item on it in February. I also wanna announce that we deferred items ten, seventeen, and eighteen. Ten is the request to negotiate the development agreement for Moses Tucker Partners. That's item ten. Seventeen is application two-two-eight-nine, eleven-twenty-five West Curlew Place. That's gonna be deferred. That's an ordinance for annexation, also future land use map amendment and rezoning. That'll be deferred to February sixth. Also, application twenty-three-one-twenty-three conditional use approval and site plan approval for Island Drive. That's deferred to February. Actually, that's a future date to be determined. So let's move on to public comments. Are there any public comments this evening? Public comments.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Officer Gario, City Manager LaCurso, and our esteemed Clerk Irene Jacobs. Welcome to a new year. I do have to say, we were, again, blessed by God to have a very fortunate epiphany. I know there were some crazy things leading up to it, but I think overall it was very successful, and I believe everybody who attended had a good time. And in coming into the new year, I know there's many things that are coming upon us. And I went through and found a number of short scriptures with regards to not being afraid. So these first few are from Genesis. This one's fifteen-one. "After this, the word of the Lord came to Abraham in a vision. Do not be afraid, Abraham. I am your shield, your very great reward." Twenty-one-seventeen. "God heard the boy crying, and the angel of God called to Hagar from heaven and said to her, What is the matter, Hagar? Do not be afraid. God has heard the boy crying as he lies here. Lift the boy up and take him by the hand, for I will make him into a great nation." Twenty-six-twenty-four. "And this was when Jacob was wandering, and from there he went up to Beersheba. And that night the Lord appeared to him and said, I am the God of your father Abraham. Do not be afraid, for I am with you. I will bless you and will increase the number of your descendants for the sake of my servant Abraham." Forty-six-three. "And God spoke to Israel in a vision, and night said, Jacob, Jacob, here I am." He replied, "I am God, the God of your father," he said. "Do not be afraid to go down to Egypt, for I will make you into a great nation there. I will go down to Egypt with you, and I will surely bring you back again, and Joseph's own hand will close your eyes." And there's other passages, Exodus. In fact, if you look at, don't be afraid, like, a couple hundred pop up. And the reason I say this is I know you're coming into some troubling times. We've seen the demand letter from Morgan. We know that now that the special counsel report, the trust agno suit is going to get a little more vicious. But just remember, a couple of things. All that stuff they wrote in there about y'all being partisan or biased. We, the people, elected you, and we stand behind you. So don't be afraid. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other public comments? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak for a public comment, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Item one is attorney's fees. Unit Salzman Jensen invoices B-one-B is Person, Colen, Mooney, Fernandez, and Jackson invoice four-five-eight-nine. Item two is increased file number two-zero-zero-zero-one-one-P-C-M Golf Course Grounds Maintenance. Item three is authorized execution of FDEP Grant Amendment and Extension, L for Spur. Item four is aboard file number two-four-zero-zero-four-six, purchase of Corcat Shelters. Item five is renew file number one-eight-zero-one-three-seven, online marketplace for purchase of products and services. Item six is increased file number two-three-zero-one-zero-three, Agenda Management Solutions. Item seven is extend file number two-three-zero-zero-eight-five, single source purchase of public records technician services. Item eight is reject all bids submitted for bid number two-four-zero-zero-four-zero, Bayshore Septic to Sewer Project. And item nine is ratify file number two-four-zero-zero-two-six, automatic license plate recognition cameras and annual license subscriptions. Is there any item that a commissioner would like to pull that where he has questions? Okay. Are there any public comments on any of these items? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments on the consent agenda?
If anyone has a public comment they'd like to make, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, may I have a, if there's no discussion from the commission, may I have a motion to approve in a second, please?
So a motion to approve consent agenda items one through nine.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kolyanis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotis?
Yes. I try to keep forgetting Vice Mayor Lunt's not here, so, all right. Special consent agenda, item ten has been deferred. Item eleven, approved Riverside mural project. City Manager LaCurso, how do you wanna handle that? Ms. Jennings is here.
Yes, Ms. Jennings is here to answer any. Ms. Jennings is here, Public Art Committee, to answer any questions. As you know, we addressed this before and had sent, the art committee had looked at getting us some new drawings, new designs, and they had quite a few, quite a few submissions, and they've selected a submission for Riverside Park, and I'll turn it over to Joan. I'm sure she's here for any questions of this stuff. It's here for your approval to initiate this mural on Riverside Park.
Yes, and the artist Jonathan Ramirez is here on Zoom, should you have any questions for the artist himself. But we were very happy, not only very happy with his design, but he was very responsive to all of the requests made by the Public Art Committee. The design is inclusive of tennis, soccer, and football. He changed the football player's jersey to the sponger maroon, and, and, you know, I think, I think it's a really nice design that's appropriate for the location. So as Mark said, we went through an awful lot. We actually went through two calls for artists, and we got quite a few responses, but this was far and away the best.
Okay, thank you. Are there any public comments on the mural at Riverside Park? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments concerning the Riverside mural?
If anyone would like to make a public comment on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, Commissioners, any, any questions for Ms. Jennings or any comments?
Yeah, I'd like to ask Ms. Jennings, maybe the artist, pictures look great. I just wanted to ask, on the south end of the building seems to have the plain side of it. See if maybe they could flip the football side of it from the north end to the south without altering too much.
I don't think that would be a problem. I think the designs are made in such a way that they, he could be very flexible about the placement.
Yeah, other than that, it looks sharp. It dresses, you know, brings in all the different activities going there with, you know, action, motion shots. Looks great, so.
Thank you.
Any, anyone else? I think it's a vast improvement from what we had before.
Oh, yeah.
This is really rock solid in terms of sports rather than something a little more abstract, so I appreciate that. Do you have anything else?
No, I just, when you do the motion, if you wanna add that on there, I think probably the reason the artist did it is because of the windows and different things. I didn't wanna have the picture, you know, pure, but again, it's probably appropriate to be on, it really is appropriate to be on the other side. I know it's got some difficulties with the doors and the wind.
Right, yeah, there are.
That sort of thing, but still, it's appropriate for that field. It is, so if you make the motion, the request to, when you make the motion, have the request in there to see if they could flop the the football.
Right, yeah, just modify the design.
Yes, just put it on the wall.
Of the, of the.
Commissioner Kulya, would you like to make the motion?
Sure, as long as you think the artist wouldn't mind.
Mark, is the, is the artist online?
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Yes.
Mr. Jump, is the artist online?
Mr. Jump, is the artist?
We did have someone raise his hand and then drop it, if you can. Uh, I'll got them allowed to talk. If you can unmute yourself.
Uh, hi, yes, can you hear me on?
Yes.
Uh, yes, I could modify the design.
Perfect. Thank you so much for your cooperation in the design. It looks great, sir.
Thank you, thank you so much. I appreciate this opportunity.
Thank you.
Good.
Embodied voice of the artist.
Yes.
Commissioner Kulya, would you like to make the motion?
Yes, motion to approve the Riverside mural project and amending that the north end football image be put on the south side and the south side image be put on the north side of the building.
Okay. Sir, second?
Second.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, you had a comment?
Yeah, this is not towards this. I just wanted to ask the city manager, are we gonna do anything with the roofs since in this picture it doesn't look too good?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, that's all.
Yeah.
All right. Or Ms. Jennings got me on that to make sure we're gonna coordinate that with the project, and we said we'd coordinate in with the, with the mural.
Thank you.
There is no further questions. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Kolyanis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Ms. Jennings. Item twelve, authorize city attorney to initiate foreclosure of seven-oh-seven Chesapeake Drive. Mr. Salzman, this is your item.
This, as you can see from the memo, this property has been out of compliance with code for many years. We have tried to address this issue. Prior city attorneys have addressed this issue. We've brought this matter before the court. The court has instituted some fines, but we're still not getting any cooperation. We've had some cooperation mentioned, but it never happens. So we're at this point where this has been consistently there. I've discussed this with the chief city manager, and we think this is the route we're gonna have to go. It would be nice if we start litigation, if the board approves it, that we get some cooperation, and we would certainly entertain that at any time. But I have to tell you, all we've received is lip service. It's an eyesore for neighbors, and it's consistently been a problem for.
Yeah, and I'd like to add that the residents of Chesapeake have been very patient with us and patient with the process, but it's been a long time, and they're about ready for us to take action, and I agree.
Let me go to public comments. Are there any public comments on this item? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access public comments on the proposed foreclosure of seven-oh-seven Riverside Drive, I'm sorry, Chesapeake Drive?
Anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay, Commissioner Eisner, thank you. Commissioner Eisner, you have your light on.
Um, this is a question, I don't know whether it's for the city manager or for the attorney. This has gone on five years. Do we have a timeframe instituted in how long we let somebody be out of compliance before we go and bring this to a head like this? Is there anything?
Well, we have, if I, if I may, we, we have addressed this in the court, and we've brought this there, and we've brought contempt against this individual, and the judge has found him in contempt, but yet we're still not getting anything done. This is a pretty, this is the last step when you go to one of these things. It's never our intention, you know, code enforcement is to get compliance and not to penalize or fine somebody, and certainly we never like to be in a situation where we're taking away somebody's property unless we reach a point where there's no other choice. So that's why it does take a while, and it's a process that at least this city and other cities I work with, this is the last step. They don't ever wanna be here, but we don't believe that we have a choice.
Okay, thank you. Okay, are there any other questions from Commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Kolyanis?
Yeah. Mr. Salzman, so how does the process work? Does, how much time would the, in going through this foreclosure procedure, would allow the owner of the property to negotiate and, and?
As in any case, what happens is, and you're familiar with obviously how lawsuits work, you know, we file the complaint, they have their time to respond, then we then do some initial, in this case, very limited discovery, and move forward with our complaint. The court will require mediation, as always, before there's any kind of trial or hearing.
Okay, so the owner will have ample opportunity to rectify this situation?
And we would definitely come to the table with the intent to see if there is some legitimate way that this could be cleaned up and maintained that way, if we could find somebody that would be willing to do it. The owner isn't willing to do it, so I don't know if there's a family member or someone else who can do this. But yes, we don't, the last thing we wanna do is take this property and have to.
This, this process may bring it to a head.
I'm hoping.
Okay, thank you. Can I, can I ask, is this property relating to Ms. Hinton?
Yes.
Does, does she have any open claims against us as a, as a city?
No, not that I know of.
Okay. That I'm aware of.
No.
Thank you.
Is there anything else, Commissioner?
No, no, no.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, motion to authorize the city of, okay. Is there a second from anyone?
I, sec. Mayor, I just, if you can get your whole phrase out before we get the so moved, I really didn't grasp the, the whole.
Do you have more questions?
No, no, but I just, I'll second it.
Okay. Roll call?
Commissioner Kolyanis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulyas?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotis?
Yes. Um, okay.
And, and just so as everybody's aware, Mayor, we will do a final demand letter before we institute any kind of complaint, hoping that this will come in compliance and we don't have to go any further.
Okay. Okay. Item thirteen, approve, approval to attempt to purchase land at tax deed sale. City Manager LaCurso.
Yes, this is a unique piece of property. If you know where our lift station is on Dixie Highway, from there to the river, there's a rather extensive piece of land. There's that, there may be a little piece of upland next to the city property, and there's a little piece of upland next to the city property, and I don't know if people keep thinking that we have to have that property or not, but people keep buying this piece of land at tax sale deeds, calling us and asking for sometimes ten times more than they paid at the deed. We have no real use as far as the lift station for it. The last time this happened, there was a piece of some equipment that was on the property. We simply moved it and went on. His offer, again, was outrageously above what he paid for it, and we didn't. However, this is a great piece of preservation land. It's on the Anclot River. It would be a great piece of land for us to preserve. If you look at the history of it, the person before that bought it at a tax deed, and I even think the person before that, they keep buying it, but there's absolutely very little or nothing you could do on that piece of property. It abuts the city property, so we want the commission, we want the permission for the city attorney to appear at the tax sale and try to, try to get it for tax. Now, we're not gonna outbid stuff. Someone starts bidding, and they wanna pay it off, and then go to us, we tell them no, and we wait two or three years till the next one comes up. We're not gonna outbid anybody, but if there, we can take it. If it fully meets the land preservation being, being wetland on the, on the Anclot River, it meets all those criteria, and if we can get it for the tax sale to preserve it, then, then that's a great use and the use of that money to go forward and try to get it for the tax deed sale. So we need your permission to do that.
Do you want a maximum amount, authorize a maximum amount, or, I mean, or?
You could, but I don't know. Attorney Salzman, I know you, you know about these things, and, and how do you want it to?
We do need some kind of, somebody has to have direction as to the maximum amount that the board is willing to pay for this.
And I don't think we know yet what the, what they're gonna put up. We, we don't know the, we don't know the price yet or what they're gonna put up, 'cause, 'cause we asked, but they, they don't have that price and stuff. But I don't see us going much more than what the actual price that they put up at the courthouse to satisfy the tax deeds, 'cause again, we're not gonna outbid it. If someone wants to bid it and pay the taxes on it, then we'll just sit and wait and, and go. We're not gonna get into a bidding war with somebody. So I don't know, we wanna go a percentage above what the price is set, or?
Okay, let me go to public comments, and then we'll come back to the commission. Are there any public comments on this item? This is a, a purchase of, an attempted purchase of some land, I think it's twenty-four acres?
Yes.
Uh, most of it's wetland with a little bit of upland.
Tiny bit.
Adjacent to our lift station property.
Yes.
On Dixie Highway.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Page six five one four Ashland Avenue. First off, what's the appraised value? What's the amount of the tax lien that's still showing and then you can probably figure out some figure in between there. But as far as the purchase of this property, yes, it would be a good acquisition because it does abut the river, but there's predominantly wetlands. If you actually look at the property on, you know, the Google Earth or one of those earth maps, so I would wholeheartedly recommend you make some type of attempt, but put it within a reasonable range based on the actual data that's available to you. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Mr. Jumper, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand. You'll be allowed in to talk. And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
Okay. Before I go to the commissioners, let me ask, C. Manjul Lacorice, this is an unincorporated, I looked at that. This is unincorporated, so I know because it's abutting our property, we can annex it in. And I do know that we have a, that land preservation fund, which I believe we have about three hundred thousand in it. Is that correct?
No, we made that last, but we've got between ten or fifteen thousand in it right now.
Only ten or fifteen thousand, okay, all right. Let's go to Commissioner. Commissioner Kulianis, you've got your line.
Now, the process may be different and the attorney can correct me, but I purchased some property through the Pinellas County. It was in a bid process. Does this work in the same fashion?
Yes.
So, it's kind of a touchy situation because if we say the number and somebody wants it, they just say one dollar more, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so how do we, how do we play this without where we have to be transparent to the public, but without playing our card that somebody could bid us by, outbid us by one dollar?
Well, number one, I would recommend that we have some more definitive numbers which we're waiting on. This is not until February twenty-first, so you'll have subsequent meeting before then. So, we can bring that information to you if you're willing to pursue this. That's what we're really finding, number one, that you want to pursue it, then number two, we could bring it back at a subsequent meeting for you to give us a general percentage.
So, Mayor, would you like us to?
Yeah, no, that, I think we need to, this is February, if I'm not mistaken, is when this will happen, is that right?
February twenty-first.
So, we've got time at the next meeting with more information.
And we could think about how we play this.
Yes, and you could speak to Mr. Salzman privately about that.
Okay, so I make a motion, I make a motion, we defer this item?
Well, I am, I am asking the board to make a decision, if you can, tonight, whether you're willing to first off consider it.
All right.
That's separate, because if you're not willing to consider it, then there's no sense of us bringing it back to you.
Right, so let's go to, finish up with the commissioner comments first. Commissioner Kulias?
Yeah, hopefully we can come back with some numbers or maybe come up with a percentage above that taxable amount that they're looking for and hopefully if they're watching this meeting, they'll see that that property, there's pretty much slim to none, many things you can do with it, so what we're trying to do is preservation, so hopefully it works out. I approve this tonight.
Commissioner Eisner, do you have anything?
Yes, I also agree. I would like to know some numbers. I'd be interested just entertaining the numbers and then we can move from there. I also agree with Commissioner Kulianis, as far as I don't want to put a top end, you know, you kind of can't get into a bidding negotiation when people know the other side of it, so I'd like to keep that to where possibly we give the authority to the city manager to do some of the negotiation and give him a, you know, a band of where, what we would consider. It has to be worth what we're willing to pay versus what the tax assessment is on it as well, because it's not gonna be that much of a value to us, but it seems like this has been a something people are buying and trying to sell, you know, to try to make a couple of bucks on it, that's about it. So, I'm willing to pursue and look into it, but not willing to do any more than that right now.
If I may, can we have a motion to, the commission to express its interest to, in the affirmative, to pursue a tax deed purchase of this property and condition on additional information coming at, I'm not sure whether January, the second meeting in January would be.
It's really soon as we get the information from them, so it'd be one of the, the next meeting available from when we get that word of.
Is there, can we get a motion to just go ahead and express our interest in purchasing the land as the city attorney had requested?
So moved.
Commissioner Kulia, did you have additional comments?
No.
Okay, is there a second motion to second of the motion?
Second.
Okay, if there's no further comments, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Vaticiotis?
Yes. Okay. All right, item fourteen is ordinances or resolutions now. Ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four, building and fire codes, first reading, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wish. We're not done with this. We have to wait until seven thirty before we get the, get to the resolutions and ordinances, so we've got twenty-eight minutes to kind of take a break, so.
There may be a couple items that we need to discuss if we don't want to break, if we want a few minutes to discuss those first and then it'll be a shorter break. I know I've got one item on schedule, so I think, I think the city attorney has an item on reference to.
The Sagonius Trust.
That we're gonna discuss at citizen and city manager's comments.
That would save us some time, yeah. Is that acceptable that we could divert from, okay. City Manager Lacorice, why don't you go ahead and start first?
There's two meetings we have to talk about setting up and I know with the vice mayor, it may throw a wrench into one, but the one I'm requesting sometime towards the last couple of weeks of January, if we could, is possibly a half day in the daytime work session and that was strictly be with myself and my department heads and this commission to talk about two thousand twenty-four, the things we have as a staff scheduled for different things, for instance, in planning. We talk about the schedule, strategic plan, comprehensive plan, the Greek town, projects, we talk about projects. I'm thinking it's maybe a four hour a morning or an afternoon, whichever is preference. We have all staff here and we just run through a series of us talking about what we have down that we've talked about in two thousand and three rolling over, hearing what the commission has to say about it. To get us started, we really can't wait till February or March when we get the new commissioner. We want, we need to hit the road on two thousand and twenty-four now. We've been delayed by the circumstances of two thousand and twenty-three, so we'd just like to make sure we're on the same page and show you the schedules, see if those schedules meet with you. So, if I could look at your schedules probably for that week of the twenty-second or even the twenty-sixth for a morning or an afternoon, or it may be better to give me mornings or afternoons where you're not available and then I can have some choices of different things and again, it'd just be a work session. Again, staff, me, talking with you about our outlook and to get started and get the schedules going right now for two thousand and twenty-four.
You said the twenty-sixth?
Sometimes the week, there's a commission meeting next week, so I was thinking that week of the twenty-second. Sometime that week, a morning or an afternoon, that week of the twenty-second. And if that's not good, then, you know, maybe the beginning of that next week. Just if maybe you give me the afternoons or mornings you're not available and then if we've got two or three, we can, we can talk about next week. We can talk about setting, next week at the meeting, talk about setting one to do that with.
Twenty-fourth is the citizens academy is the only thing.
Yes, that and white, it's an evening, yeah.
Tuesday or Thursday is open right now as far as the evenings go for the city.
Yeah, we like, kind of like to have it in the daytime, either a morning or an afternoon in the daytime when I got all staff there to discuss.
Would you all consider January twenty-second? It's a Monday?
That would be fine.
Is that good down the line?
Yeah, what time?
Twenty-second, either a morning or the afternoon. Either nine o'clock or one o'clock.
I'm fine. Nine AM?
Nine AM?
It's fine with me.
Okay. Then the other meeting, I don't know if you're talking about, we were gonna talk about the meeting of, you know, we got the meeting of what we're, you know, doing with the, you know, the city manager and advertising and all that stuff. Obviously, we've got four now, so I don't know if there wants to be any discussion now or a next meeting of, of when we're looking at or what, what. I know that was the first meeting we said we were gonna set in the new year after the two regular ones, so I don't know if anybody has any thoughts or we want to discuss a little bit openly how we want to set that meeting.
That would be a special session?
That would be a special session where the public could.
And that would be in the evening?
That would be, that would be, we'd have to set up in, in the evening, which I'd have to look for dates, but I just want to see what timeframe when this, when this board is looking at doing that.
Evenings are, work really good for me. Tuesdays are my tightest days, but evenings work good.
So, let me ask, this might be a mayor or a Mr. Salzman question. How soon could, if, do you anticipate having that seat filled?
Can I, I think I've been.
I mean, I'd rather have.
Regina's gonna bring that to you. Regina's gonna bring that to you next week, so nothing said in stone because she's still working on it, it's gonna be on the agenda and you're gonna talk about that. I believe right now that timeline's gonna be the decision made on the second meeting of February. The second meeting of, by now, again, that's gonna change because she's gonna bring it to the board next week. Y'all are gonna discuss the timeframe, it may change. Tentatively now, I'm thinking it's, you know, if it goes by how I've heard the draft so far, it's probably the second meeting of February where you appoint that next person.
I would ra, I'd rather have all five members involved in, you know, the process of choosing that, our process and city manager search.
You want the fifth person here?
I think it's important.
I mean, it, I don't want to, basically, it would be Commissioner Kulianis and Commissioner Kulia, I don't, that's fine with me. I'm gonna, I, I think we need to do it the sooner the later, but I also agree, for example, the labor and the employee relations meetings, I think we need to wait until that fifth commissioner is on board, even though it's just from February, let's say, until August when the new election take, when the election takes place. We have probably that fifth person there for that. And, and so with this thing, if y'all want to wait, that's fine with me. I mean, what's your thoughts?
Well, again, that's, originally when we had five, we were gonna do it towards the end of January, but I know we've got a different situation now, so that's why I wanted to ask tonight of a timeframe.
Right, there are some things, I mean, I know that we were talking about just, if I may just say something. I know that we were going to talk about how we would proceed, advertising the whole thing, but I also think we need to take an opportunity to discuss the, the structure of the administration as well, and that's something that City Manager Lacorice and I have been talking about. And if there's this kind of grow your own city manager in the future that this commission wants to take, and I admit that would be the best, although hiring one assistant city manager right now and with an expectation that person become a city manager is not supported by the charter, but there are some other approaches that we can take that, and it's a little complicated because of the, we can get into it then, but I'd like an opportunity to discuss it at that time too, because if the commission agrees with any changes, all that has to be folded into the budget process, probably before March for Ron's numbers and things like that. Would that, would you agree with that?
Yeah, Ron would do it, begin in April and that, it would be nice to have those numbers begin in April.
You know, the end of February and April, that timeframe would be fine.
I mean, but I also think it's important that whoever does come on board does look back and see that, you know, former vice mayor, he actually, you know, had a plan that helped set us all, give us a timeline and so I'm open to having a meeting with just us four before, but if you want to wait, that's fine, but when it comes to the nominations, I was considering even having an interview process, whether it be one-on, you know, one-on-ones individually or a special session for those who want to be nominated to answer some questions, because I, you know, I think it's important we do get some questions out there, not just make some nominations and then vote on it.
Is that the city manager or are you talking about the position?
The position, the appointment.
We're talking about having that person in place before we have this work session. So, that doesn't, that doesn't affect the process.
I mean, I, that's fine. I, you know, I think that the idea that these, this current commission is the one who put the wheels in motion with the city manager and his retirement. And so, I think that they, we also have the greatest experience. I don't know who will be elected. Maybe that person will be a former commissioner as well and they will have that experience. I can't say that for sure, so I, I know it's gonna take time. I think y'all recognize that, but we're talking about really one month, right?
Not maybe, not.
Yeah, so I don't think one month is gonna hurt us. Let's say the first week after the appointment of the new city commissioner after February, whatever the date is, the week after that is when we could start targeting when we would have this meeting.
Well, we'll have a better idea of what that date is when, when Ms. Kardashian comes next week.
Right.
And tells us what the process is and then we'll have an idea and then we'll know the date that we're actually making that decision and then we could have it the following week or whatever.
So, we want to hold off on that one, right?
Right.
Okay, we're gonna hold off on that one. We talked about the workshop that you wanted with regard to the staff and we've set a date and a time for that and then.
Mr. Salzman?
Mr. Salzman? Yes, I notified the board of the letter I received last Thursday. I got it to the board on Friday regarding the Sagonius property. As you know, I wasn't at the subsequent meeting where you all voted down any resolution that we would go after the property through condemnation. They are now raising the issue of inverse condemnation, stating that they will make a claim that the city's prior actions, which we don't necessarily agree with, resulted in the lack of value of the property. As you know, this property was used as a park for decades and it's not something that the city necessarily did anything to, to result in the inverse condemnation. The use of the property based on the zoning is extremely limited as to what it can be. We have previously had evaluations done on the property. We tried to negotiate this several times, but it appears that the property owner wants to pursue litigation either by the city or by them, and I think the purpose for that frankly is based on some financial benefits to the property owner. So, that's kind of where we are. I wanted you to be aware of that, obviously, before the city is looking at any type of lawsuit where we're the defendants. If we are the defendants in this type of lawsuit, we will pursue it as we would have to begin with, which is number one. We don't believe that the city has done anything to result in inverse condemnation. But number two, there's a certain value to the property, which the city looks at as being significantly lower than that which the property owner has, and that's the reason why we haven't been able to negotiate it to begin with. We tried this for a period of time off and on and then we got to the point that if the city wants the property, that we would do condemnation. But, so now we're in a position where they're gonna move forward with it and I wanted the board to be aware and if there was any questions regarding that, that I'm here to answer those questions.
I just had, just for clarification, the inverse condemnation, in the end of the day, does that mean that the city has ownership of the property?
The city would have ownership in the inverse condemnation. This is not a Burt Harris taking. It is an actual inverse condemnation, creating the city, basically by what they've done, now have, has to buy the property.
And if a?
We've made it useless in essence.
I know I'm hitting you cold on this, but maybe City Manager Lacorice knows the answer. In our charter, we've got that maximum limit of three hundred and fifty, right? But it says with the exception of, there's a couple of exceptions. One of them is recreational property. Does that mean that we could go more than three fifty without, for recreational property, without?
Again, I believe and I talked to several attorneys, we didn't talk, I haven't talked to Andy about. to Andy about this one, but if, if it was for the pure purpose of taking the property and being parking, a, a park and stuff, I think, but we'd have to designate, you know, we have to, I'm sure we'd have to designate that that's the purpose-
Okay.
And that would be the, you know, we'd decide definitively what, what that property be.
Right, because that's the only thing that, I think if a judge rules on a certain price, we're gonna have to pay it.
Yes, if a judge ruled, our charter doesn't, uh, cannot nullify what the judge's order is.
That answers the question even better, so, um, that's a question I had. Commissioners, do y'all have any questions for Mr. Salzman?
It sounds like this could possibly work out for us, and what, what ended up seeing like a tough situation, so I'd definitely like to support this tonight.
Yeah, um, the judge is gonna make the decision, just like it was a condemnation anyway, I think.
Right, so what we would probably do in this case, and if the board is okay with it, uh, if they're gonna file suit, uh, I'll just go ahead and accept service on behalf of the city, and then we could start moving forward, um, with the litigation in a more, uh, expedient way and less expensive. I mean, we have already done certain things in this case, so, so we have some of the, uh, experts', um, findings already, so we're in, you know, I don't expect the long dragged-out litigation in this case.
I don't think you need authorization from the commission, if we get a lawsuit, it has to be defended.
Oh, no, no, I didn't mean that, I wa-, I was just, no, I was just saying, uh, acceptance of the lawsuit, normally they have to serve it on the mayor, um, or if the mayor's not here, on another member, if I just tell the, uh, other attorney I'll accept service, they just give it to me.
Okay, I'll follow you.
And that's, that's how we'll pursue it, and as, and I will keep the board updated.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Eisner?
Would you say, um, Mr. Salzman, this is a unorthodox situation?
I mean, it's, inverse condemnations are not unique, what we've seen more of is of Burt Harris cases of taking, but those are based on zoning actions or actions of the city. This is kind of interesting, yes, I'd say it's unique from a standpoint as that the city has used this property for a long period of time in the past, for what, and it's limited for what the use is. The argument really in this case is, what can you use this property for, as was mentioned on another piece of property, there's very limited, that's what this property can be used for, and it cannot be developed in any significant manner, unless we change zoning and comp plan issues.
Who picks up the, uh, attorney costs on this case?
On inverse condemnation, uh, depends on how we litigate it.
Okay, but in, in a regular condemnation, it's the city that would pick up the, uh, legal fees, so it's-
I mean, again, their claim is, is that the city has created this property basically unusable by the actions of the city. Now, there may not be, again, there, there's limited use of the property, and we know that, but, uh, we don't believe it's by actions of the city.
Commissioner Kuliya, do you have anything else? I, I know how it feels sitting down there with a vacant seat, and everybody's focused this direction, I know how it feels, because I was over at that end, and everybody was talking this way, so, um, all right, um, is there anything else for Mr. Salzman, we're just gonna proceed as a normal course of business, so, all right, thank you. Um-
Now we should take a break, if we want to break.
We've got, um, okay, let's break for ten minutes, because I, it'd be, take a break, and then recess at seven nineteen, we'll reconvene at seven thirty. Thank you. We, we reconvened a regular session, um, at seven thirty PM, and we're gonna begin our ordinances and resolutions. See if I can get back to the agenda. Agenda item fourteen, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-four, building and fire codes, first reading, uh, City Manager La Course.
Yes, um, Dave Gilson, our building official, give that presentation?
Okay, this is, um, basically obligatory from the state, we, uh, were required to adopt six dash one, Roman numeral one, two, three, and six, four and five are optional, and, uh, section two, we're, so we're obliged to adopt those. It's pretty standard, every three years. Do you have any questions?
No, it's fairly routine, that with each new addition, we adopt them by reference, and that's how we operate here in the city, it's been that way for-
Historically, yes.
Let me go to public comments, are there any public comments on this item? It, it's more of an administrative item, um, to just keep our permits flowing through there according to state law. Okay, um, Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
And we do not have any raised hands at this time.
All right, thank, thank you. Um, Commissioners, are there any questions concerning this item, this ordinance twenty twenty-three, twenty-four? Okay, um, if, if not, may I have a, um, motion in a second, please?
Motion to-
Oh, I'm sorry, you need to read the ordinance by title.
Yes.
Yeah, sorry about that.
Ordinance twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, updating the reference to the current versions of the technical codes in section six dash one and seven dash twelve of the code of ordinances, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for the effective date of this ordinance. That is first reading of ordinance twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, second reading will be held on January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Okay, um, Commissioners, or, is there a motion in a second to approve, please? So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call, please.
Um, just for the record, this was also published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only on January third of twenty twenty-four. Commissioner Kuliannis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuliya?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticarius?
Yes, um, item fifteen, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-eight, application twenty-three, one thirty-seven, future land use map amendment twelve zero one Gulf Road. Mr. Salzman, if you could read this by title, please?
Ordinance twenty twenty-three, twenty-eight, an ordinance of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, amending the future land use map for point eight eight acres, more or less of real property located at one-two-zero-one Gulf Road on the southwest corner of Gulf Road and Tarpon Drive from commercial neighborhood CN designation to institutional I designation, providing for findings, providing for severability, providing for repeal of ordinance or parts of ordinance in conflict herewith, and providing an effective date, that is ordinance twenty twenty-three, twenty-eight, read by title only on second reading.
Okay, thank you, uh, City Manager La Course.
Renee Vincent will present this on the land for our new fire station?
Thank you, this is, uh, application twenty-three dash one thirty-seven, uh, ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three-eight, uh, excuse, twenty twenty-three dash twenty-eight, excuse me, this is a future land use map amendment for property that the city owns, um, on Gulf Road, uh, the purpose of, um, the rezoning is to support the future use of the property, uh, as a new fire station, um, for the city of Tarpon Springs. Uh, the property is a little under an acre, the current, uh, ne-, land use designation is commercial neighborhood, the proposed designation is institutional, you will be, see, um, in the future, a corresponding, uh, zoning map amendment, um, also, uh, but- You will be see in the future a corresponding zoning map amendment also, but that will be processed after this is underway. Just location and context, this is the southwest corner of Gulf Boulevard and Tarpon Road. The current fire station is a little bit to the east. And just aerial photograph of the site for reference, this is Johnny's? Jimmy's, thank you, I'm sorry, sorry. This is Jimmy's restaurant and the gas station, and then this is the daycare. Just a survey of the property. Street level view of the property. Again, this is the surrounding, the predominant land use in the area is residential low, the gas station and the restaurant are commercial neighborhood, as is this property, and then the school property is institutional. And then the proposed land use map category will be institutional for this property as well. What that does allow, it supports the future use of the property for government use, and it also provides for a little bit larger floor area ratio, which is good for the construction of the fire station to meet our needs. This will also require a countywide plan map amendment. Under the countywide plan, it's designated as retail services. On their map, it will also become public, semi-public. So that will be processed and then come back to the board for final reading after that takes place. I won't go through all of this, just, this is, all the backup is in the staff report. It is compliant, it's a small scale amendment under the state, and it, we do find that it's consistent with the comprehensive plan. The only thing that's really of note is, it technically is an increase in residential density in the coastal high hazard area, but the intent and use of the property is municipal, and the rezoning will basically nullify any additional two units that could potentially be built on the property if the city ever sold it in the future, so we don't view that as an issue. Staff recommendation is to approve. We've had no public comment on this since its beginning. The Planning and Zoning Board reviewed this on December eighteenth and did recommend approval by a unanimous vote. So with that, I'll stop and answer any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to public comments first, and then we'll come back to the commission. Are there any public comments on this item? This is the property, the best way to describe it is next to Jimmy's restaurant, which is the proposed new fire station seventy, and this is what's needed in order to put that fire station there. So are there any public comments? Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, it's allowed into talk, and we do have a raised hand, I'll allow the first person in. If you can, state your name and address for the record.
Peter Lactus, five-one-four Ashland Avenue. I think this is a good thing, this is something we've been trying to get done for a while. My only question would be is, what would be the plans for the old fire station? What is the city going to do with that property? Is there any vision for that? So I'd like to hear, see what y'all think about that aspect after the fire station is built, thank you.
Okay. Are there any other comments, Mr. Jump? From anyone?
And we do not have any other raised hands at this time.
I'm pretty sure I know the answer to that, but that question of what are we going to do with the old fire station?
We're having some good discussions of some options, and the board will decide what we're going to do with it.
Good, thank you. Yes.
Can I just clarify, this is first reading?
This is first reading, yes. Thank you. We got through public comments. Commissioners, any questions?
I'd like to make a statement.
Did you have anything?
I know we're just talking about the land use change, but as the building does get designed, consider a little buffer area between Jimmy's restaurant and that property as it gets busy over there, as people may or may not park a little bit on the property, but just some space would be considered for the business owner too in the area.
We can look at that, yes.
Thank you.
We can look at that, yes.
Okay. If there's no other questions from commissioners, may I have a motion to approve in a second, please? So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call.
For the record, this was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title with a map on November twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three. Commissioner Kulianis?
Yes.
Commissioner Kulias?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticius?
Yes. Okay, the next item is resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero one. I know it shows as appointment of vice mayor, I know it shows as twenty twenty-three point zero one, but it's actually twenty twenty-four. Mr. Salzman, could you read the proposed resolution by title, please?
Resolution twenty twenty-four oh one, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Tarpon Springs, Florida, appointing Commissioner Blank as Vice Mayor of the city of Tarpon Springs, and providing for an effective date hereof.
Okay. What I want to do is kind of go through a couple of things first to make sure we all understand the process, and then I'll open the floor for nominations, and then we'll go from there. The, this is for appointing a vice mayor from this evening until April first, I'm sorry, the first meeting in April, which is what our requirement is in our rules of procedure. So it's about a three-month duration for the vice mayor that's selected tonight. There's some kind of surprises that came up in our rules of procedure and also discussions that I'm going to kind of go through, and I'm going to ask the commission if they've got any questions concerning that before we open the floor for nomination. I'm going to read the rules of procedure, and there was no choice of keeping the vice mayor position open and letting this next senior commissioner handle it. That was an interpretation by our city attorney, Ms. Kardashian. So that's the first thing. So let me read the procedures first. The commission shall select a vice mayor at the first meeting in April, which this process applies for tonight as well. The following nomination and selection process shall be used for selection of the vice mayor. The nomination process shall be explained to the commission and to the public by the mayor, or parliamentarian, which would have been the city attorney. B, the chair opens the floor for nomination, that would be me. Each member of the commission, upon recognition by the chair, shall have a right to place a nomination for the honorary office of vice mayor, the name of any other commissioner, or themselves before nominations are closed. When all nominations have been made, the chair will so announce and declare nominations closed. If only one commissioner is nominated, that person will be declared by the chair to be elected and shall serve until a successor is elected. If more than one nomination has been made, selection of vice mayor will be accomplished by motion. If no nomination, if no nomination is made, or if no nominee is elected by majority vote, the most senior commissioner shall be appointed as vice mayor. Okay, so you go to the rules of procedure, and then it makes reference of a chair. And then I had conversations with Ms. Jacobs first to, once the very, once I got back from vacation and after the first of the year concerning the resignation of Vice Mayor Lunt, and also the appointment of a new commissioner as well, as how this was going to proceed. So we do have a provision in our charter for appointing a commissioner, and there's also procedures in our rules of procedure, commission rules of procedure of how we're going to proceed. But what's lacking is the details, and so Ms. Jacobs worked with Ms. Kardashian to kind of get the process pinned down. That's why we're going to be looking at the process for appointing a commissioner next week, but there was no choice for appointing a vice mayor tonight. So Ms. Kardashian wrote a memorandum today concerning the nomination, because I had a conversation with Ms. Jacobs based on her conversation with Ms. Kardashian. I wanted to hear it directly from Ms. Kardashian. We had a brief conversation on that matter today, and I asked her to put her opinion in writing, which is different than the opinion that you had concerning the appointment of a, of a regular commissioner. So let me read that to the public. I know you received it from the city manager earlier today. May the mayor, the issue is, may the mayor make nominations for the pending appointments under the Board of Commissioners adopted rules of procedure, resolution twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five? This is not just for the nomination of vice mayor, but it also pertains to the nomination of a replacement commissioner for Commissioner Lunt. Pursuant to Article One, Paragraph Two and Three of Resolution twenty twenty-three, twenty-five, during the selection of vice mayor and filling vacancies on the commission, the chair, which would normally be me, receives nominations from each member of the commission. If only one name is received, the chair declares that person as the winner. As multiple nominations are received, the chair will close the floor for nominations and entertain a motion for appointment. The chair may not make, that's me, the mayor, the chair may not make or second motions unless he passes the gavel, and in the instance, the mayor would pass to the most senior member, in this instance, of the commission. Article four, Paragraph five, C, provides that the mayor may not chair the discussion of an item for which he intends to pass the gavel. So in order to pass the gavel on this item, he would have to do so prior to taking nomination. In the vice mayor appointment, if no nominee is elected by a majority vote, the most senior commissioner shall be appointed as vice mayor. When filling the vacancy on the commission, if no individual is selected by a majority vote of the commission by the sixty, I'm sorry, this is for the commissioner now, by a majority vote of the commission by the sixtieth day following the vacancy, then the governor may appoint a qualified member of the community to serve on the Board of Commissioners until the next election, which right now would be planned for August. The, so even if I pass the gavel, so basically I don't get to make any nominations the ways the way the rules are written right now. If I pass the gavel to the next senior person, that person becomes the chair, and they give up their right to make nominations, and also nominate, and also make a motion and a second to that individual. There's no doubt that our rules need some work, and not only in that particular case, it also pertains to the senior, the next senior commissioner. There is no definition of who the next senior commissioner is, as far as seniorities go. That would be, right now, we've had it, Vice Mayor Lunt was the senior because of the designation of vice mayor, Commissioner Eisner was designated as the next senior commissioner, Commissioner Kulianis, and then Commissioner Kulianis, which was easier because he came on in twenty twenty-three. But the seniority of past the vice mayor is an ad hoc process, and that was something that was not determined by the commissioner, that was determined by, by, you know, I don't have the specific detail, but let me just leave it, it was not determined by the commission by any kind of a vote. It was done at the staff level, charter official level that that took place, and that was some time ago. So that's where we are right now. The other thing I want to say is that I don't know how this is going to turn out tonight. I certainly, you know, don't hope that we can do this in a very amicable way, but I also want to put on the table that Vice Mayor Lunt was also a, our representative to the Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council. That is an important position that's going to have to be filled. I would have liked to have done it tonight, but we'll, I'm going to ask the city manager if we can do that at the next commission meeting. And also, I don't know that you received a copy, but we received a copy from, an email from the Forward Pinalis, and the governor still has to sign the changes authorizing us for a permanent seat, but they're having a work session in February, a workshop where they actually want somebody from the city of Tarpon Springs to sit at the dais, as if they were members. So what I would like to do next week as well is go ahead and appoint a permanent member, representative from the commission for that, so that they start next February and also continue on once we do have our permanent seat. I would like those three to be individual, each individual commissioner, so that we don't have the vice mayor acting as the other or so forth. The vice mayor position, I've said this when I first became mayor, is an honorary position, that's how it's described. There's no real authority there, that individual sits in for me if I'm not here, or at ribbon cuttings if I can't be there, but that's it, there's no other authority. The Tampa Bay Regional Planning Council, they actually represent the city, and any votes that are taken, basically, they vote on behalf of the city, whatever our policy is. Forward Pinalis is even more important, because we actually have projects right now, I think there's three projects that we're seeking funding going through Forward Pinalis right now, and somebody needs to be there, which we haven't been because of the shared seat approach that's been taken, to actually run shot, ride shotgun over those to make sure that at least we have a good chance of getting those approved. Some of them have to do with some improvements along distant avenue, which is what we're seeking, pedestrian type and bicycle improvement. So that also is going to involve voting on behalf of the city, acting as the city's representative. So to me, that's probably of the three positions, that's the one that has the most authority and most importance, that, and honestly, I would like to be a member of the Forward Pinalis myself, but I've got fourteen months, and I think each other individuals got a second term that they can seek, and hopefully at least they'll be here beyond the next fourteen months, and following up to a second term for them. So that's what I want to say in this, and what I want to do is go ahead and open the floor for nominations, and then once the nominations are made, we'll go to public comment, and then we'll have some motions on, motions and seconds as far as voting on who would be a member. So Commissioner Kulianis, I think you had your light on first, is that, or was it you, Commissioner Kulianis?
Doesn't matter.
You don't, you don't, Commissioner Eisner, you've got your light on, okay, go ahead.
So I do nominate myself to be the vice mayor. I, I don't know if this is a good time to say this, but I will be at tomorrow's Forward Pinalis, as I am at all of them.
Right, well, you're on the, also in the school safety committee as well, okay.
Correct.
So that was Commissioner Eisner. Are there any other nominations? Commissioner Kulianis, you've got your light on, or is that, yes, you do.
Do you have your light? Not yet. Go ahead. I'd like to nominate myself for vice mayor for the three-month period.
For vice mayor, okay. Commissioner Kulianis?
I'd like to nominate myself for vice mayor.
All right, well, I want to be honest with y'all, I came prepared for this tonight. Actually, Commissioner Kulianis surprised me a little bit, but that's okay, let's go to public comment. Are there any public comments? People are a little scared to get up at the podium. So anyway, all right, Mr. Jump, are there any remote access comments?
If anyone online would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and you'll be allowed into talk, and we do have a raised hand, I'll allow the first person in. And if you can state your name and address for the record.
Peter Lactus, five-one-four Ashland Avenue. I know this is a difficult decision. We've seen some fireworks and animosity between two of the commissioners, both wanting to be the vice mayor, and also for other issues. At this point, I would recommend Commissioner Kulianis, mostly because it's neutral for the time being, and I think he would be a good representative of the city in this temporary capacity. I know he's the youngest, but he's not the least experienced, and you all know what we're talking about, the city knows what we're talking about, about the feud that's going on, and still seems to simmer underneath, and I just don't think we need to have another explosion at this time. So to me, the sensible answer is, let's nominate and elect, appoint Commissioner Kulianis as the vice mayor, and then y'all can work at the next meetings for filling in the other positions, thank you.
Okay. Okay, I don't think we're going to have an explosion tonight. Are there any other comments?
And we do not have any other raised hands at this time.
Okay, and we've done the public comments. All right, so are there any motions? Now remember, I can't second a motion, are there any motions?
I motion to nominate myself as Vice Mayor for the three months.
You're nominating, you're making a motion for yourself, okay, is there a second? Okay, motion dies for lack of a second, is there another motion?
I motion to make myself Vice Mayor.
Okay, is there a second for that motion? Okay, that motion dies for lack of a second, is there another motion?
I make a motion that I be appointed Vice Mayor.
Okay, is there a second on that? Okay, that dies. All right, now, the rules are that if we don't, that's okay, I think I've got it under control. The rules are, if, if we don't get a, a, a motion and a second, or none of the nominations prevail, it would go to the next senior person. Now here's where the dilemma is, there's nothing that defines the next senior person, and we've been doing this from an ad hoc perspective of assuming Lunt, Eisner, Couillard, Couliannes. And I've had conversations with, confirmed that Ms. Jacobs, is there a process, I mean, do we have the seniority that was voted on, as far as the seniority, the procedure for identifying who's senior on the seats?
We don't have a definition.
Yes.
When we identified the seats at the time, we ran it by the city attorney, and we also ran it by Regina, Attorney Kardashian currently, and the way we picked the most senior member, as you see in the voting call, had to do with board experience.
With?
With board experience at the time.
Most experience.
At the time, the different.
Can you speak into this a little louder?
The two non-incumbents were.
Is your thing, is it on?
So I'm sorry, the, the two non-incumbents that came in at the same time of the election. At that time, the way we figured seniority with the city attorney was that one had served on a board before.
Okay.
Because we didn't have a definition, but our, by Charter, you have to see them by seniority.
Okay. So we don't have a procedure that was approved by the Commissioner?
That is correct.
Okay. City Manager Lacource, do you agree with that?
I agree, we do not have a definitive determination of who's senior.
Now let me ask, I'm going to ask a question, and I think I'm going to know what the answer is, if, if we proceed and, under what we just discussed, with Commissioner Eisner being assumed to be the senior person, is there an objection by any other Commissioner on this board concerning that?
Yes, I object, there's nothing in the Charter that defines the board experience, we both were elected at the same time, and that's, that's not the way to go about it, they were just basically seating arrangements.
Okay, that's all, just wanted to hear if there was an objection. Commissioner Eisner, do you have any?
Thank you, so what I do want to say, something that was not discussed at all, there've been three Commissioners at every meeting, every ribbon cutting, every police function, and that was you, the Mayor, Craig Lunt, and myself, and I know you both have been there because I've been there. It hasn't been the same for, I know Commissioner Couliannes has shown a, a really good concerned effort to be at these things, and I actually, he'll admit, I complimented him the other day and said it was good to have a fourth Commissioner there, and he thought I was kidding, I wasn't kidding, but, and I don't mean this in a negative way, but facts are facts.
All right, no, I understand, and I very much appreciate you being there, that's not a question, and I do want to make it clear that whoever does become Vice Mayor, they have to be, this is, it's an honorary position, but, you know, there is no requirement that, that if I'm there, that the Vice Mayor has to be there, but really, from the standpoint of the townspeople, it, it probably, the more Commissioners there that need to be there should be there, and whoever does become Commissioner, I want to make sure that you understand, it's a commitment on your part, that you have to, you know, if there's something that is going to require you, or I may ask you that, you know, can you be there as well, that you would have to be there, at least unless there's some good reason that you're not, so go ahead.
I had more, I also spoke with Ms. Kardashian today as well, and her interpretation, as it was explained to me, was because I had prior board knowledge that I had sat on the Board of Adjustments for six-plus years, that that's what was considered giving me priority and seniority, so that was her comment to me.
But she wasn't on the board at the time, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm just, I want to be fair to everybody, and I don't want this to be, and again, as I said, if whosoever Vice Mayor, there's these two other important positions that have to be filled as well, and I just want to make sure that that's understood too. What I want to do is, Commissioner Couliannes, please.
Yeah. So, you know, this, this whole Vice Mayor thing, when my brother was Mayor thirty-seven years ago, they had Mayor Pro Tem, and he, he, you know, he chose Tony Samarcus to be his Mayor Pro Tem, and I'm sure it was ratified by the, the Board. You know, the current process of ranking us is, I know it's ad hoc, but it's something, right? There's some thought to that process. I mean, if you're going to rank by board experience.
You've got more board experience.
I win by a country mile, because I served for over twenty years, but not here. The, you know, this, this Vice Mayor thing is, you know, gets, a lot of it's ego, let's just be honest, right? It's having some title that, that, you know, you're, I wish we didn't have it at all. I wish that if Commissioner Eisner was, happened to be agreed upon to be the second-up guy, then he could show up if you didn't, couldn't show up, but, but in essence, any Commissioner can show up at an event, and if you call him and say, hey, can you go, go make a speech for me? I could make the speech, Commissioner Couillard's can make a speech, and Commissioner Eisner can make a speech, so we all can do that. I kind of would acquiesce to who you want, I mean, it's, I, I think that, you know, in the past, the Mayor kind of got who they wanted and felt most comfortable working with. So I'm, I'm, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but I'd be more than happy to go with whoever it is you would choose, and if you don't choose, and I'm not saying you have to, but if you don't choose, then I'm fine with the ad hoc methodology we've been using, it has some, some rationale to it, I don't know how, I don't know what the other tiebreakers would be, other than flipping coins or whatever.
Well, that's what I had in mind.
Yeah, however it plays out, I, I don't care, and then, but if we do that, then we could do it in April as well, so maybe this person's only going to be there three months, and then the other person will be there a whole year. So, you know, this, this hustle to get that designation may not be that critical, but I'm willing to go with either who you want, I'm willing to go with the current process the way it is, which in this case would default to Commissioner Eisner, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Okay, okay.
I'm just letting you know that there's.
Let's, thank you, and Commissioner Couillard, you've got your light on, then we'll go back to Commissioner Eisner.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a couple comments regarding some of the so-called attendants, we, we've discussed before that the attendance to ribbon cuttings and stuff isn't considered part of our Charter stuff, but also, there are other two senior officials, including the Mayor and Vice Mayor, who can go to these ribbon cuttings, and when I'm able to go to them, I do go to them. I've made the announcement that I'm more than ready, just like I was last year, in which, we even had a statement from the April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three meeting, which Commissioner Eisner stated, he had no interest in being Vice Mayor at all. And so, it's disappointing to see Commissioner Couliannes, you know, you see, it's a three-month position, the last time around, he was on board by being able to support me when we were going through those rotational pieces, and Vice, and Mayor, you did bring up, we would go through the rotational piece, and, you know, at the time, there were some things lingering over, and, you know, well, seems like not much has changed since then, and, you know, you see a leader, when it comes, if you're not going to be here, I can efficiently and professionally run the meetings. When it comes to being a representative of the city, if you're not there, I think you've seen that I've been able to handle it in a respectable manner when it comes to dignitaries and other individuals coming in.
And don't get me wrong, I think all of you do a good job, I don't have any issue with that, I really do not, I'm just trying to get through this quandary that we're there tonight. My preference would have been, and this is where we started when my conversation with Ms. Jacobs, was not to have a Vice Mayor, until we had the Fifth Commission on board and then go through the process. Now, I've got a question for, maybe flipping the coin is a little silly, but that's one option, but let me ask Mr. Salzman. Mr. Salzman, our rules of procedure, we have a policy, and Ms. Jacobs, if you can look it up, that we can waive our rules of procedure for a particular item.
I have the rules of procedure, let me.
On any particular item, we can waive our rules of procedure, where, in that way, I would interpret that was, if we waive the rules of procedure, then what I would ask was to defer the appointment of a Vice Mayor until April, at the first week of April, when we have five Commissioners on board, maybe by then, we'll have better definition of our rules of procedure, maybe to a meeting prior to that.
Sure, but I do want to follow up with my, my comments.
Yeah, go ahead, and then we'll go to Commissioner Eisner.
And I do want to follow up with Commissioner Eisner, I don't think there's an absibility chance that you should be Vice Mayor, there's been a lot of issues that have popped up, we can't get into detail with that, I know some have been vocal about it, but aren't being vocal now, and that's just where we stand on it. And Commissioner Couliannes, I mean, for you to take a three-month grab when you were on board so many months ago, and now it seems like an opportunist opportunity to take that position is frankly shocking, and so, that's why I stand on that for now, I am going to be out of it, because if we're going to say we're going to follow our word, we're going to follow our word. And so I do have an excitement, I can handle those other boards.
Okay.
So that's why I stand on that for now.
Commissioner Eisner, do you have anything else?
So I want to keep this as civil as I possibly can, but let's, I'm going to keep it very civil. The comment made that there's been statements made regarding me were made by Commissioner Coulias, and they were without merit, they were just statements, and there was no backup to it, it was just statements, but that was that thing. There was another comment made that he's been to some ribbon cuttings, I think there's been three or four, other than that, he's been to none, he's never stepped foot inside the police station or the fire station, period.
That's false statement right there.
Okay, wait, wait, wait.
I'm speaking, I'm speaking, I let you speak. I've been to everyone, not some, so I don't think I missed maybe one because I was at a Forward Pinnellis and couldn't be at a ribbon cutting. The purpose of being a Vice Mayor is not for ego, as was said, and that is the reason why when Commissioner Lunt was here, I had no desire, I conceded and said, he's a good man, and he should be the Vice Mayor, but now I have to judge that Craig Lunt is not here, and I feel that I would be best suited, since I do represent the city, I know I'm going to be at Forward Pinnellis tomorrow, I know that others won't, and I also, you know, will be at the breakfast for MLK, I go to every single item that's there, and that's what a Vice Mayor does, I only conceded to not be the Vice Mayor, because honestly, I didn't, it wasn't something that I thought I, I didn't need it for my ego, so those kind of comments are just hurtful, and that's where I want to stay.
Let's just, let me just calibrate everybody on this Commission, I'm going to be in office for, no, I'm sorry, for fourteen, for fourteen more months, and I'm termed out. I'm hoping each of you run for office, you each have another term that you can run for, some of you may decide to run for Mayor, that's, that's fine too, but remember, what you're doing with these, this going back and forth is not helping, you know, earning the next term. I understand you all feel or are impassioned about it, but just, please, I'm just offering you that as just a comment, as, and some advice that we've got to have a good year, we can't be bickering, and believe me, four months as a, as a Vice Mayor is, is, you know, is, it's not that big of a deal. Let me, let me go to Commissioner, I'm sorry, City Manager, City Attorney Salzman.
You, yes, you have the ability to waive your rules, a vote of, a simple majority of the City Commission may waive any provision of these rules at any meeting.
So rather than kind of taking this, you know, I've even thought about splitting the, the next, it's not four months, next three months into two parts, one would be Vice Mayor, I, I'm sorry, Commissioner Eisner, the other one would Commissioner Couillard, but I, I don't want to act like I'm King Solomon in this matter either, and so what I'd like to do is, since we've got the ability to waive our rules, and so that would be an option to waive our rules, and Ms. Jacobs, let me ask you something, in this particular case, the interpretation by Ms. Kardashian was based on our, I know we have that provision in our, in our Charter, but the provision.
That it had to be today.
Was in the rules of procedure? That the shall part was in the rules of procedure?
It was in the Charter.
It was in the Charter, that we shall have a. I think it says, we shall by resolution, is that correct?
I believe so, yes.
So we can't waive that?
I have, I have, I have.
Let, let, I'll read and finish, and then we'll go to you, that's okay.
I apologize, I was working on so much today, I can't. Let me just pull up the Charter a second.
It says, the Board of Commissioners shall by resolution designate one of its members as Vice Mayor, who shall act as Mayor in the absence of the Mayor, period.
Now that means we need to have one.
Well, it says that you will do it, it doesn't say when, that's the.
So do you, and I'm hoping you can help us out tonight. So do you, and I'm hoping you can help us out tonight.
I mean, I got an idea.
Commissioner Kuliass, thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, I've got an idea. So, if we can waive the rules, then I think your King Solomon idea is, is probably the best. So we could, we have about fourteen months left, right? February, March, and then we start a whole new cycle, right, in April? For a year. So we got fourteen months. So why don't we agree that, let's start off with Commissioner Eisner gets five months, Commissioner Kuliass gets five months, I get the last four months. How about that? Everybody gets a shot? And we, and we have a, and, and we're done? Can we, can we waive the rules?
You can waive, you can waive the rules, so, yes, if you vote to waive the rules.
I, I make a motion, we waive the rules.
Let me hear from the other commissioners, I, I know...
I think it's fair, everybody, everybody's appointed, everybody has that title.
I understand, I understand.
And you don't, and you don't have to ever think about it again.
I understand, that was a... Let me go to Commissioner Kuliass.
I just, I don't know what type of opportunity this is for all of us. I mean, we, we've come on board, talked about how the mayor was gonna rotate from year to year. Commissioner Kuliass, I don't know what's happened where, you know, you wouldn't even second me for, for three months on this one part. So it's some weird things going on. Now I'm giving, now I'm giving you five months. I, I get it, but now... But, but for what? Just so you can be a vice mayor for five months? Or are we gonna, we have vice mayors a year at a time?
Commissioner Eisner?
I'm being short-changed, and I feel that this was my year from the first place, going back to Commissioner Kuliass, Kuliass's statements. Again, I'll repeat that there were lots of, you know, there was no bickering, there was a lot of throwing snowballs at my head, and I was defending. So, I did not bring up any of the things that were brought up to me. And to cause peace and to be the moment to a person, I said, "Yet, let the vice mayor keep the second term." And it was not an ego thing. At this point, Mr. Lunt is not here, and that's why I am not looking to concede this. And I think I'd be best suited, since I proved, I've proved beyond a shadow of a doubt that I've done the job.
If I had a choice, I would make one of you mayor, and then the other person could be a vice mayor. That's how I feel about it. I mean, we need to get the job done. And quite frankly, I'm beginning to think, I, I don't wanna degrade the idea, but what you said about mayor pro temp is exactly right. When the mayor wasn't gonna be there, he reached out to somebody, and they made him mayor pro temp. All that meant was you, you basically, and then all of a sudden, somewhere along the line, the last twenty years, there was this idea that, "Let's add prestige to the title, let's make it vice mayor, and make it sound like it's really important." I've got, I think my authority in the charter is three lines beyond a commissioner. The authority for vice mayor is, I think, two lines. That's the extent of it. And I think y'all, you know, if y'all wanna put vice mayor on your campaign posters and whatever, that's fine.
That's really seems what it's about.
But, but I just...
Commissioner Kuliass, you know, I, I don't wanna repeat the, the accusation that Vice Mayor Lunt made, but you're, you're actually acting it. Let's, let's, we can, I, I don't, I'm fine with, like I said, I'm fine with you choosing, I'm fine with any process. Again, you want me to defend myself, Commissioner Kuliass? I'm the most qualified to be vice mayor. I have served this, I've served on more boards, I've held gavels on, on many times, and I've been in forums far beyond what you've had experience at. So, if, if, you, you know, and I don't wanna play this with you. I'm fine with Commissioner Kuliass having it for the remainder of this year, and then go to Commissioner Eisner, and I never get it. I'm fine with that, too. I don't care, okay? I just think we need to have a fair process, let's, you know, so that it, it, this isn't that divisive. Let's figure a way for it not to be divisive.
So I'd like to make a motion again.
Going five months, five months and four months, I don't care with that as well.
What I'd like to do is, is if, if the commission will cooperate with me, and I think, I, I wanna use the word statesman, we need to be statesmen in this, and do what's the best for the city, and, and kind of going back and forth on this thing, in my opinion, is not very healthy. I was subject to the same, exact same thing Commissioner Kuliass, where you were with the former mayor, and the vice mayor at that time, I was at everything. And, and also, I was the most qualified because of my former experience and everything. Maybe not as a commissioner, but as former experience. Same thing, Commissioner Eisner. And I know y'all got up and defended me, both of y'all did. I, I really appreciate that. But I didn't get it, and I just accepted that. And I just moved on to do what I needed to do, and, and, and then, you know, wound up feeling that I needed to be at least holding the gavel so that we can get some things reversed from what was done before. That's the whole idea. And we've got so many things, like you're saying, these holes in the procedure that we need to do. So, I, I don't wanna waste any more time on this, and it's important, but I don't particularly think the idea of vice mayor is important, at least for the next four months, or three months. What I'd like to do is, is waive the rules of procedure. I, I'm not gonna put Mr. Salzman on the hook, but he is our city attorney. The charter says you, you do it that way, but it doesn't say when you have to do it. And I'd like to defer that until the, the April 1st meeting, which is, 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 is three months away. And then allow Trish, if I'm not gonna be at something, to identify, rotate through that to see if y'all wanna do that. And then we'll have a fifth person on board, and I'm hoping we can have some kind of a rock-solid approach to nominating the vice mayor, rather than getting into this. And I did say the rotation was, you're correct about that, Lunt, Eisner, Kuliass. There were some issues way back then, when we had to defer that one year. And I, I'm not sure how to handle it, and how it would be fair to both of you. I mean, the, you know, the one year was given up. Should it be Commissioner Kuliass, should it be Commissioner Eisner? I, I don't know. All I know is that I don't want, I don't wanna call it, I, I don't wanna create any acrimony or animosity over this thing. It really, I really don't. And, and I, I knew there was gonna be hard feelings tonight, but I don't wanna get back into where we were last year. This has gotta be a good year. And both of y'all, all three of y'all, maybe both of y'all, maybe the three, will be running for office next year. And we need, you need to act like statesmen to put these things behind you. And, and people are gonna vote you for what you tell them, not for what your title is. If they vote for you based on your title, I, I think that's, that's not saying much, so. Do any, do, do any of you object? I mean, may I have a motion to waive the rules of procedure and defer appointing a vice mayor until April, the first meeting in April? Or do you wanna continue on the way we've been going?
You might as well just amend the motion, or amend the rules so we can all be vice mayor for five months.
Would have to be till April, the first meeting in April, which is three months or so.
Start off with Commissioner Eisner.
Oh, you wanna do the five months?
I think it's the most sense.
I don't have an issue with that. Five months, five months, Commissioner Kuliass, and five months. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Salzman, do we have your blessing?
As long as you waive the rules.
Okay, we waive, waive the rules, and that waive the rules for, well, we'll do it again on the first meeting in April as well, because we would have already had a vice mayor in place, and just continue on. We don't have specific dates, so I'm going to, we'll, we'll go ahead and make a motion to that, and I'll ask Ms. Jacobs if she could lay out the calendar of when the changes will take place. Is that acceptable to everybody? Okay.
So we won't be voting on this?
We, we waive the rules of procedure, where, and, and then we will adopt having a vice mayor, each of the three commissioners would be vice mayor for one-third, one-third, one-third of the remaining term until the very next, not the next election, but the next, would be April of 2025. And that would be one year, so it would be about four months apiece or so. Is that acceptable to everybody? Okay. We have a motion to that effect.
I make a, I got you.
It's my motion, it's my idea.
Good.
Come on, give me this.
You can have it.
I make a motion that, oh, do I have to make a motion to suspend the rules?
Yes, that should be the first motion.
So I make a motion, we suspend the rules of procedure.
I'll second that.
Okay, if there's no further comments, Commissioner Kuliass, your light's on?
No.
Okay, roll call, please.
Commissioner Kuliass?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuliass?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yeah.
Mayor Vaticiotis?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, the second motion would be that each commissioner would serve one-third, one-third, one-third of the time between now and the first election, first commission meeting of 2025, when the new commission takes seat.
I hate this so moved idea, but I'll just say so moved. That will be April 2025.
April 2025.
I'll second.
Now that we have a motion on the floor, can I say something?
Yes.
Okay. I actually think, I, I know this may sit sour on some people, both of you, because in some ways, you both are getting short-changed sometime. I think it's, allows this to be a done deal. It doesn't bring the new commissioner into habit. Is this gonna be just as acrimonious then as it is now? It's always acrimonious. It's, it's been historically acrimonious. That's why I, I hated the whole vice mayor thing, and I wish they had kept the pro temp thing and, and kept it very low-key. So, I, I just think this is a fair way, it solves this problem, everybody's taken care of. We're all qualified to be able to go and, and take the place of the mayor if he, if he can't, and it's done. So, I, I hope there isn't hard feelings, and I hope there's no hard feelings with, with you, with me, Commissioner Kuliass, I've always thought the world of you.
No, absolutely. And I think it was a fair opportunity.
This is kinda where I wanted it, no, this is where I wanted it to end. With just, let's just come up with some design, and I know, I know this, the, the challenge we have, because we don't have a real, you know, order of, of seniority. We don't have that well-defined. But this kinda takes care of it, and so...
I, yes, until 2025, and it won't be my problem. All right, is there any other commissioner, or the same actual course's problem? Is there any other?
That was good to me.
Are you? Look, Commissioner Kuliass, do you have anything else you wanna say?
I think it's a good opportunity that we all get the spot, because if either someone like Commissioner Eisner or myself did get skipped this April, it, it would definitely be sour for a while. So it's, get it all fared out, it's even, we all have the opportunity and to represent the city in, in that capacity, and we can move forward.
Okay, Commissioner Eisner? All I'm gonna say is from an old man, the oldest person on the commission, I'm proud of y'all for what it's worth. I know that there's a lot of passion there, and there's a lot of feelings. You know? And sometimes, quite frankly, being put in positions of, of, you know, you're all leaders, that's not the point. Each commissioner is a leader of the community. But sometimes, being mayor, all of a sudden, you're the, the ringleader of everybody. And, and, and so, you need to understand when it gets hard that I'm, it, it's one of these situations where you make decision, I make the decision, half the people aren't gonna like the decision, half the people are, are, if I make the decision, the other people are gonna like the decision. And this approach, it's, it's kind of a King Solomon approach of, of splitting it up. And I'm just very happy that y'all cooperated in this regard. And I, I only brought a quarter with me, and I was trying to figure out who to have flip the coin otherwise, so...
Was it a two-sided head that you had there?
No, I, I would have probably been accused of that, too, so...
I'm just joking.
I know, I know, all right.
Mayor, we will recommend to Regina that we put some language in, either for seniority or another recommendation.
I, I think that we need, just like the organization with city manager, we need to give this vice mayor thing...
I think we have to call the vote on that. On that third, third, third thing, we haven't voted on it.
Oh, yeah, we haven't.
Are we gonna, the seating?
No, we said we have to vote on this.
Yes, we do.
We, we didn't vote on it.
Which y'all are still in discussion.
I just made the motion, but we haven't voted on it.
All right, let's vote.
Okay.
Just for clarification, that's with Commissioner Eisner starting first, then Commissioner Kuliass, then Commissioner Kuliass. And then I'll put a schedule together, and y'all will be changing seats every four months, or whatever that term is.
And we'll change the...
We make new friends.
We'll change the language in the reservation.
So that's in the charter, the seating's in the charter. Commissioner Kuliass?
Yes.
Commissioner Kuliass?
Yes.
Commissioner Eisner?
Yes.
Mayor Vaticiotis?
Yes. And what I was gonna say, that just like I would like to see the administration, we take a hard look at the structure of the administration, I'd like to take a hard look at how this thing takes place, because there's, I mean, my first experience with this was way back with Commissioner Seber. And another commissioner was put, and she was arguing seniority, experienced seniority. That was 2018, 2019, that was six years ago. Then we had another situation, this last group with, with a person, you know, and, and, you know, I, I don't wanna say anything about that. And this particular case, I, I tried to make it amicable, but, you know, we, we kind of need to stay focused on, on what we need to do, rather than, than, you know, on other things. So anyway, that, that item's behind us, and, and I do wanna, and if you have any ideas, really, if you do have any ideas, please talk to Ms. Kardashian about it, really. I mean, for the next, I, I hope all of y'all are here in, after April of 2025, and you're gonna be, have to live with this thing again, all over again. So y'all need to deal with Mrs. Kardashian on this, and myself as well.
And we do have the Charter Committee coming up, so that's...
We have the Charter Commission, we have the Charter Commission and, and Charter Revision Commission being convened in April/May timeframe, I think, yeah, so... Let's see, that was the end of the agenda, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Let's go to board and staff comments. Major Rizzero, I want, Major Rizzero, I wanna congratulate you, Assistant Chief Rizzero. So, do you have any comments?
No, sir.
Okay. Mr. Salzman?
No other comments than I had before.
City Manager, of course.
I don't wanna stage anybody, if someone's gonna talk about Epiphany and the fine job they did. If someone, if one of the commissioners, I don't wanna steal your thunder for talking.
Well, no, you go ahead.
Okay. I, I, I just wanna say, from the Epiphany Sarah, all the work of technology, from the commissioners down through the public works, to the police, to fire, security, it was just, you know, one of the most smoothest, and we had some challenges, you know, but it's just one of the smoothest, well-run, well-organized, from not only me, but comments from the outside, from people seeing, it was just an excellent, it was a good start, and hopefully, the blessings and having the Archbishop of City Hall will, will, will bring forward a good 2024. But I think everybody involved, from this commission down, put on the best face for, for Epiphany and the church and everything. It just, it just, everybody did a great job, and it was one of the, one of the most smoothest, best Epiphany ceremonies from start to finish on there and stuff. So, just wanna thank you and everybody involved, all the way down to our workers, for pulling that off.
Does any other commissioner wanna have a say anything on that, before we get to individual commissioners? Commissioner Eisner?
I, I wanted, excuse me, I wanted to second that. I thought it was a picture-perfect day. Things worked out really well, I didn't see that there was any sort of real problems. I was very proud to be a, just even a resident of Tarpon Springs and seeing all the people that watched the procession. It was a very exciting day. I think that Tarpon Springs shined, I was really, I have to compliment, you know, the city manager, the police chief, the assistant chief. I know Toreen worked his tail off. We have just a great, great, um, group of people that work there, their fingers to the bone to make everything, you know, um, look the way it did. And I was very proud that the Epiphany went off without a hitch. And, uh, that, that's pretty much it. I, I was just very proud to be living here, especially I came back from Australia and coming back to Tarpon Springs was a blessing in itself.
Commissioner Cullia, do you want to say anything about that?
No, Epiphany was great.
Commissioner Cullianis, do you have anything?
You know, the, um, there's just something that seems to happen, uh, the, the weather can, uh, forecast can be just awful. And just at the right time, the sun comes out, the, the sky's blue. You know, I don't know. There's something going on. Because it always happens.
You shouldn't be in this.
And, and is, is this our final comments for the night?
No, no, you, go ahead, we'll go, this is just for Epiphany.
Oh, just for Epiphany, okay, I got other stuff, I'll wait.
All right, I, I, the other thing too is I want to acknowledge, um, Commissioner Cullia was my side, uh, by my side, the, um, the church services, uh, all the procession, the, um, the doc, um, the, um, were you at the Epiphany banquet?
Yes.
Yeah, Epiphany banquet and also the, well, the, the ball?
Yes.
And so, um, and, um, and all the commissioners got to meet the Archbishop here at City Hall, the city manager did, the, the city clerk. It was a very nice, um, event, so, and I appreciated somebody else, uh, being there during the services as well beside me. We, we had a lot of dignitaries in town. Also, uh, the, the biggest compliment that I could find, I already shared it with, um, uh, that, that I heard, that I, that I already shared with the city manager, was that people were wondering on several occasions, they asked me, why did, were there so many Secret Service agents in town? And it wasn't the Secret Service, it was our police officers. They were all dressed in suits and I said, they're police. They go, no, 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 they're seat, I'm talking about the guys with the little curly things out of their ears. I said, no, we have those too, those are police. And, and they all looked very extremely, not very extremely professional, and they conducted themselves very quietly, clandestinely, and it was just a wonderful, wonderful day, uh, that, that Epiphany procession, and they were extremely mindful.
I actually saw one guy talking in his shoe. I'm just saying, sorry.
So let's, um, Ms. Jacobs, do you have anything?
Just get smart.
Did you have anything else? Okay. Commissioner Cullianis, do you have anything?
I, uh, I just want to wish everybody a, uh, a wonderful 2024 as we start out and that it be a happy and healthy year for everyone. Um, I, I'm glad we came to that resolution on the vice mayor, put that behind us. Hopefully everybody can be happy or a little sad, you know? The, uh, city attorney can concur with me. The best deal is when everybody's a little sour, right? If, if everybody wa- yeah.
Best resolution, when both people walk away.
Yeah, they all, everybody's a little happy, a little sour, it's okay, you know? And, um, mayor, you know, with all this, all the priests and everything we had going and then you gave this, our, our sermon today, uh, our prayer, and you, you have a second career. You already got the beard, you already got the look.
I'm not going to talk about it.
Anyways, thank you.
Let me ask you, um, we needed to do the appointment by resolution or do we do that at next week's meeting?
Well, we read the resolution and voted on it, but we will change the language of the resolution and have you all sign off on it. But I think you've already adopted the resolution because you did it by.
Did everybody understand that? We adopted the resolution with a five month, four months or the?
Yes, we'll just may, change the language in.
Okay. Okay. I asked you yet? No, go ahead.
No. I have a little bit of sad news. Um, I heard that, you know, our friend Kosis had passed and, uh, that was pretty sad. I didn't know him as well as maybe some of you, but he's always was a gentleman to me, always had a, a, a big smile on his face, always happy to shake my hand and, uh, and I feel very bad. I know he wasn't doing well, I know he, but, you know, when that time comes, which we all will face someday, um, I, I just, I just, I, I wish the family my best and I'll be at the funeral and the reception. Um, I, I just was really sad to see that happen. I know he was an instru- instrumental part of the town and the Greek community and, um, I was just a little sad to see that that was not how I wanted to start off 2024. But I, yeah, on a good note, um, I had a good vacation. I'm glad to be back here. You don't realize how good you have it in the town you love until you're somewhere else. And, uh, you know, after two weeks, that third week, I was like, when is my airplane coming for me? So I, I'm happy to be back here, I'm happy to, um, uh, accept this vice mayor. Um, it wasn't an ego thing. Um, I'm just looking to serve, uh, the city to the best of my abilities and make judgments with the residents in mind and that's it. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Cullias?
Yes, the, the official holiday season is over here in Tarpon Springs and it ends with Epiphany. And, uh, Epiphany was just a great thing and to follow up with Commissioner Eisner, the, the passing of Costa Gassosoi, he is and was, will always be a legend in the community here in Tarpon Springs, uh, let alone the Greek community. And, uh, I've always seen him all the years participating or being involved in so many different things to promote the heritage and the culture in this town. And as I got on the board, I saw a lot of the special event applications were actually filled out by Mr. Sosoi. And so the man was heavily involved. And so it's, as someone said on, um, social media, it's going to take, going to take nine people to fill his shoes. And, you know, when people talk about, we moved the tarpon because we, we like the culture and, and we, we like the, the environment and just the way of life there. People like him are the culture, they are the heritage, they are the reason why, uh, people move to town because of all, because of so many of them who represent that culture. And we're slowly losing them. We have, as you guys have seen generations and, and, and myself coming in, it, it's a sad thing to see and, um, but he will live on forever and, uh, his family should, you know, be so proud of everything he's accomplished over these years. Thank you all.
Mr. Sosoi was, um, 76. He was a fixture at the Greek Orthodox Church. Every, every, every Sunday he was there and, uh, at every special event. He received a key to the, from the city, which, uh, he really duly reserved for, uh, deserved for the things that Commissioner Cullia described. And also he received from, uh, over Epiphany, uh, the St. Paul Medal from Archbishop El Bidothoros, which is the highest award that the Greek Orthodox Church has. He received that as a recipient. So he, he, he was with us past Epiphany and, um, um, conveniences go out to the, uh, to his family and there's, it's a large family and they loved, uh, Mr. Sosoi and I'm sure he's going to be missed. I know he's going to be missed by the Greek Orthodox, uh, community as well.
Go out of turn here. Yeah, I s- I served with Costa, um, years ago and, and, you know, they say that you are what you consistently do. And in life, you know, it's those guys like Costa Sosoi who are consistently there, um, all the time. You know, at the Colleman Society, he's instrumental in, in that program being so, uh, important in, in our town. And, and I know at the church, he was everything. And, um, and I was remiss in not mentioning him, so thank you for letting me say that. But he, he, he was definitely special and he was, and most importantly, the man was consistent. So, which is, uh, to me, one of the great characteristics of any man.
Commissioner Cullia, did you have anything else? I've got a couple of things. We went over those things that, um, uh, city manager, uh, La Course mentioned earlier, so please think about that before we have the meetings. The next commission meeting, I'd, I'd like a, um, a status and plans for the policy changes that, um, were recommended by the special counsel, um, including, um, then this is a status plans, uh, it just, if we're not ready to hear those, then basically we need to set a date when we will for the policy changes that came out of the special counsel report. Also, um, the one additional one where, um, I'd like for the city attorneys, um, to, uh, confirm concerning their contract that it includes all legal matters, um, and, and then, uh, I know Ms. Kardashian's going to take the lead on that at, at the future meeting. Um, also, um, a status and, and a plan is for policy changes for the, uh, personnel rules, uh, resulting from the building department issues. Uh, remember we give you some latitude and some other things. I think it's in that memorandum that, um, I had those things that we could do and there may be some other things that you want to do along that regard, but at least so we can get those cleaned up and we don't, they don't get lose, uh, they don't get lost through the, uh, the cracks. Also, um, again, I got here, uh, clean up the rules of procedure for clarification on seniority and nominating vacancies process, um, and, and we, we just need to, we need to fix that. The other thing too, beside, uh, Mrs. Sosoi, uh, Mr. Sosoi, we also lost a couple of other people over the holidays. One of them was Ms. Lulahulah Alexia. She was 105 years old and, um, and, um, it was very, very sad to see her. She, she grew up on Division Street, which is the same street that my, uh, grandparents lived on as well. So, uh, that family was very close to the Georgios, which was my grandparents on my mother's side. The, um, the, the one thing that, um, the, the, um, I, I want to mention when we, we talk about that special session for the commissioners, uh, for the city manager, um, you know, PJ was here this, tonight, our grant writer, and she's very, very active and I'm signing a whole lot of forms, uh, pursuing grants and things like that. And, um, and also, um, I saw Gus Bilirakis over Epiphany and, and, um, he's still very much, uh, a, a Tarpon person. And, and, uh, and what I shared with him was I, one thing that I've learned this year was that we're not going to be, given the cost of everything, we're not going to be able to survive on just tax revenues from people, the residents. We're going to have to actually, we need, as, as far as our infrastructure and things, we are going to need money from the state and the federal government. And, um, the best example I can give you is that we visited, uh, Senator Hooper and also I think Senator Anderson, uh, for the Cops and Kids Grant, and they put that in the loop. That's, that's, uh, basically, uh, the funding list or projects list that they've done that gets, starts the process. But unless we have some contact with them up in Tallahassee, others are and they're going to get the money, we're not. So what I envisioned for a city manager in the forward, in the, going forward, was not just kind of taking care of the day-to-day stuff here, but, but I'm hoping we would restructure the city administration where there, there, there will be people to do that. But he would also, or she would also be looking more forward out, you know, looking outward more as far as trying to capture those funds from the various state agencies and the federal government. And also perhaps even, uh, try and find a, a lobbyist or something to accommodate, uh, making sure that we're not forgotten up in these areas. So that's the idea that I've got when we go forward is that, um, it, it's, uh, Mr. La Course does a real good job on the day-to-day stuff, but in the future, that's not going to be enough as far as the funding from tax money and stuff like that. We're going to have to have a whole bunch of other money. You see how expensive things and, and, um, I'm hoping that workshop, we pin down those ARPA funds, we have to have those in covered 2024 or else, you know, we're, we're going to lose them. So anyway, that's what I wanted to say and, and we'll get to the special session on the city manager thing and, and talk about that a little bit more. So, um, it's 8:50. I would have hoped we would have gotten out of here a little earlier than that, but I'll take 8:50. Uh, meeting adjourned at 8:50 PM.